A little bit more time than I thought. Good evening. This meeting is called to order. Welcome to the Yukon City Council Municipal Authority Agenda. Tonight, April 6, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We're in the council chambers, Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. We'll start tonight with our invocation Pastor John Phipps from the Good Fight Church and then have our flag salute.
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the day that you have given us. Right now, inside this room, there are heavy hearts. There are also excited hearts, encouraged hearts, and I pray that wisdom prevail, that unity is provided for the best of our community, and I pray for great compassion, empathy, and a great love to make the best decisions possible for our community, for our city, and eventually our state, God. I pray right now for wisdom to flow out of the members of the city council and for those who are here in attendance to just have a heart of love, grace, forgiveness, and excitement. Thank you for this great city. Thank you for this team of people here tonight, and thank you for all that you do in our lives. It's in your Son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord. Thank you, John. All right. Role call?
Selby?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
Kachini?
Here.
Gilliland?
Here.
Okay, we have a presentation proclamation. I'm going to ask Amy Stout to come forward. I'm going to put my mask on, even though we don't have to wear them because I'm going to get close to you. Amy, you want to come up here? All right. I am so thrilled that you are here, and we have a wonderful proclamation tonight. This is whereas the citizens of Yukon have great admiration and gratitude for the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community and the armed forces, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat. And whereas the city of Yukon appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and acknowledges those men and women for their courage by showing support and honor, now therefore be it resolved that I Shelley Selby by the powers vested in me as mayor of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, and all its citizens do hereby proclaim Yukon to be a Purple Heart city. This day, sixth day of April 2021. And you know what? I didn't. Can't be a pen. I didn't sign this.
There you go.
When I present this to Amy Stout, who came to us and asked us if we would like to be a Purple Heart city. And Rick, do you have a few words to say, and then we'll let Amy say something?
Well, I'd like to tell everyone that the city of Yukon has really stepped up to the plate these last eight years, and we have been supporting our veterans. We've been getting them off the street. We're providing them homes in the city of Oklahoma City. We're doing everything we can to help those veterans that have served our country, and I appreciate the fact that the mayor is signing off as a Purple Heart city, and I want to thank her and the rest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, do you want?
Thank you. I am a member of the VFW Auxiliary. I've been a member for a little over 20 years. I know, age me. But one of the things that we were challenged with is we wanted to make every city across Oklahoma become a Purple Heart city. The state of Oklahoma became a Purple Heart state November 1st of 2019 due to a bill 232. So we're taking it a step forward. We're coming to the cities. We want to reach out to families either themselves or they have a family member that's a Purple Heart that we want to share this day with them because it's all about them. And, you know, we don't want them to forget. They made the sacrifice where we couldn't, but we're standing with them. So that's why we do what we do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Amy says she has some signs that they'll be bringing for us, and we'll have a ribbon cutting with some of our Purple Heart recipients, and it will show that our community that we support our veterans.
And there's also, there's also going to be a plaque. The plaque is provided free of charge, and then I'm donating two signs to the city, and there's an opportunity to purchase additional signs if that needs to be.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, do we have any visitors?
I have no request for visitors, Madam Mayor.
Is there anyone who would like to speak? Mr. Corny will be later. All right, then we will recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of March 16, 2021; B. Payment of material claims in the amount of $37,308. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. We'll now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all city council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 16, 2021; B. Payment of material claims in the amount of $1,023,259.61; C. Designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D. Accepting Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number WL0000092007800 for the construction of approximately 795 linear feet of 6-inch, 3 linear feet of 8-inch, and 3,660 linear feet of 12-inch water lines and appurtenances to serve the Waterline Relocation Project along State Highway 4, Canadian County, Oklahoma; E. Setting the date for the next regular council meeting for April 20, 2021, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion accepted.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Do we have any reports on boards, commissions, or from city officials? I think tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you. All right, at this time, we open to a public hearing to receive input regarding the request to appeal the Planning Commission's denial for the rezoning of C-3 Restricted Commercial District to R-2 Combined Residential District Planned Unit Development 200 North Yukon Parkway. I have received a request from Mr. Leon Corn. Could you come? Please state your name and your address. Remember that you have three minutes, and we can't make any comment back.
Well, I may have the horse before the cart or the cart before the horse, but
Would you go ahead and state your name and address? We all know you, but just for the
I'm sorry. Leon Corn. I live at 1301 River Birch Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. Retired administrator and builder. My concern is that this would almost become neighbors, this lot that we're talking about being rezoned, to go into duplexes. I understand, and I do not have all the knowledge of what was going on, but the object of the duplexes was my concern of dumping that many people into that area without any access whatsoever. You know, right now, we're looking at dumping, we've got four house housing additions, River Birch, Preston Park, Rosewood, and Yukon Crossing. You've got two churches and one daycare center, and we've got Walmart, and we're dumping all those people on one street within about, what, 60, 70 foot from Highway 66 or a stop sign. We're looking at a two-lane road. I'm sure most of you know the traffic that we're picking up, the flow that comes off of Wagner Road and then comes north on Parkway. Lot of traffic, a lot of traffic, and plus, you all know that as well as I do, that the old road is about ready to be repaired to some extent. We got, the biggest thing, if you've not been there during a rainstorm, right now, I don't understand and can't understand how they're going to be able to control the water. You know, they're about three and a half foot below grade on the road as the road sets right now. If they raise it, that's going to dump water into the daycare center, and right now, any rain that we get that's above average floods a little creek just east of that development, and the water gets high through there. So that's going to take a tremendous amount of work. I'm a little bit concerned on the sewer. You know, I put in, I had to put in about 300 and some feet, 400 and some feet of sewer line back when I did the River Birch area, then the daycare center has come along and tied into it, and I don't know if the church is tied into it yet, but that's going to be a big issue. Right there, the sewer line, big enough to take care of it. So my concern, and looking through my notes, I couldn't see where we had any idea what we wanted to do with the land, what it's going to look like, what kind of protective covenants there would be with the property. So that's our main concern is, does it need to be fixed where you have a multitude of people coming into that area?
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Do they have to fill something out? Okay. Okay, would you come to the podium? Please state your name, your address, please.
Name is Rhonda Dennis. My address is 817 T. Rose Drive. I am the president for the Rosewood Neighborhood HOA, and that's why I'm here. We have, as our HOA, we've worked extensively with the neighborhoods in the area, working on traffic, et cetera. I will, I agree with everything Mr. Corn said. I would add, we have another neighborhood that he didn't mention, which is the new Yukon Crossings, just 26 single-family homes and 72 duplexes. 72 duplexes that have not yet been built, have not yet been moved into. So in addition to all the traffic problems that we have right now, we will be adding those homes even before we're adding the additional homes that are up for appeal tonight. In addition, I understand that there's been, pardon me, I don't have the exact details, but there's been another addition for River Mesa approved, so that will be going in as well, and that traffic also filters up on Yukon Parkway. Our basic problem is the traffic. My understanding is that each developer has added money into a fund to have the street widened. For our neighborhood in particular, that money has been sitting there since at least 2008, probably before. My understanding is that money is all there, hasn't been spent, and from what we've been told from previous meetings, the city of Yukon has no plan to widen or strengthen Yukon Parkway, Highway 66 area. So that's why we're against it. We have nothing personal against the developer or what else is going in. It's strictly a parking, or sorry, a traffic issue for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Mark Deeds. I live at 808 Preston Park Drive. Agree with everything both previous speakers said. There's one neighborhood neither mentioned, and that's Smoking Oaks, which is just to the north of that that also feeds onto that. And one of the things I wanted to point out around about that traffic is, as they mentioned, it's really a nightmare with Walmart and Life Church being crossed, so when Life Church is in session, it's very bad. But the reality is, if you have a neighborhood on that east side of Yukon Parkway, they're either going to have to feed out onto Yukon Parkway and turn left, go south, or you're going to have to put them out on Main Street and have them go west. If they're going, if they're trying to get out on Yukon Parkway, they're going to be trying to go left against all that traffic we just talked about. If you put them out on Main Street, they're going to be, the light already backs up significantly, quarter, half a mile, even further at rush hour. She'd be putting them out on the Main Street, which is also problematic. Couple of other random thoughts just around not maybe so traffic oriented. You know, in Preston Park, Rosewood, that kind of thing, you know, we already have the Yukon Crossings that she mentioned that's filling up. We have the Charlemagne Apartments that's a stone throw away. We have Windsor that's over off Ranchwood. If we have rental properties over on the east, you know, the reality is, as a homeowner, you do worry about property values because you don't know what's going to happen. And then just from the schools, you know, Yukon's growing rapidly. My oldest son graduated when the new high school opened, graduated in 2012, and that place was busting at the seams at that point from students, and we're growing rapidly with all this different development, and I don't know that our schools, as far as buildings and development, can keep up with the growth that we're dealing with. And lastly, I know that that area is zoned for commercial, and I hope that doesn't change. I would like to see a restaurant over in that direction at some point, you know, because we have to drive all the way across town, and having Walmart as a grocery store has been fantastic because we did have to drive all the way. We still have to do to go eat even fast food. So that's really my two cents.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, and I am the appellant here. So I'm going to take a few minutes, kind of walk through why we're here, what we're asking for, and why we believe that perhaps an error in your outside consulting, planning staff perhaps led us down this path. The reason I say that about an error is if you, if you look at your staff report, what you will see is that the staff in their analysis talked about how the application is inconsistent with the conference of plan. And then if you go to the minutes and you look at the remarks made by three of the Planning Commission members, Commissioner, and if I apologize, this person's name, I do apologize, Commissioner Geis stated that I do think it is an issue with the comp plan that we approved and the city council approved. Commissioner Garba says, "I also believe we need to stick with the 2040 comp plan." And finally, Commissioner N. Mark stated, "I also concur following the comp plan." If you look at the comp plan, and we confirmed with Mitchell, what the site is actually designated under the new 2040 Conference of Plan is actually high intensity. What staff had noted in the staff report is that the site is designated as high intensity commercial. So it's actually not. It's actually designated as high intensity in the brand-new comp plan. And if we look to how the high intensity is defined, it says, "The high intensity land use consists of heavy commercial uses, residential uses, such as big box retailers, hospital, and high-density residential uses, such as larger apartment complexes." And then it has a density expectation of less than 30 units per acre. So this is a small site. We only have 12 lots. It's 12 duplex lots on this site. So if you look at what we propose compared to what the council recently approved in the Yukon Crossing, as one speaker had already mentioned, the Yukon Crossing has the 72 lots. That is 144 units. So we're only asking for 24 units. Additionally, if you look at what the Yukon Crossing PUD was permitted to have, and if you look at track number three within Yukon Crossing, and this is section 9.2, what they did in that PUD and what was approved by this council was some variations to what your typical R2 density and typical R2 lots would look like. Your standard R2 lot size is, of course, 10,000 square feet. In the Yukon Crossing, what the council allowed was a minimum lot size for the duplex lots of 6,600 square feet. They also varied lot width, they varied setbacks, they varied a host of different things to increase their density within what would normally be a traditional duplex development. If you look at the PUD before you in this appeal, we have no variances whatsoever. We stick with what your
Sorry, you're, Mr., three minutes. You can speak again when we open it up for discussion. You only get three minutes during this part of the public hearing.
Okay. Even the appellant?
When we come to the motion itself, then we can ask for your talk then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, he will continue, but it will be not in the public hearing. Right. Yes, you'll continue, so hold that thought. All right, is there anyone else?
Matthew Garrett, 650 North Yukon Parkway. I agree with everyone's concerns regarding the traffic. You know, it's just not in keeping with the nature of that area. We have a church to the south. We have a daycare, one church, and another sign that's up for a church that's going to go in there. And the reality is, you know, they talked about an error. I know you guys did a comprehensive plan. I looked at it. Quite honestly, I think it's an error to buy a commercial, the zoned area, and then try and put residential on it. But maybe that's just me. I looked at it and your commercial, your plan, you've got plenty of developable land. I'm happy to give this to y'all, so you can see there's plenty of area that you can develop here in Yukon. And I do look at the existing land used. It has it as low-intensity commercial, currently zoned. I do see where he's talking about high intensity through that area, but quite honestly, it's pretty clear that's going to be a commercial area. That was the intent of you guys. If we're ever going to alleviate the crush of folks, even with the opening of that Garth Brooks, it's still a crush over there. If we're ever going to alleviate that and move some of that over here to serve the people of Yukon and even some of the people to the west of us, we need to keep this commercially located. We cannot continue to put in residential. We certainly can't put in this kind of density. It's going to overwhelm our traffic, create the problems that we already have on Garth Brooks on the other side of town. No one's even going to come. Anyways, that's what I think. Please deny it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Was there anyone else who wished to speak? Okay, we'll now close the public hearing and go to item number three. Consider a motion to deny the appeal, approve the appeal, or send the request back to the Planning Commission regarding the request from Ashton Gray LLC to rezone from C-3 Restricted Commercial District to R-2 PUD Combined Residential District with a Planned Unit Development 200 North Yukon Parkway as previously denied by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion to consider the motion and deny an approval?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Do we discuss now?
Do we need clarification on the motion? The choices on the motion are to deny the appeal, approve the appeal, or send the request back to Planning Commission.
So let's have our discussion.
Okay.
And then, and this is where, sir, you may come back. I thought you were going so strong that maybe you're really going to do it in three minutes, because a public hearing is just three minutes you get to speak.
Understood. I've been accused of talking too quick sometimes, so.
So now's your chance to finish it.
Okay, thank you so much. So I do want to focus on the staff report. So despite at the time staff believing that we were designated in a manner in which we weren't, they still recommended approval. And so I want to talk about why they recommended approval. In the staff report, and this is the staff report that's dated January 11, 2021, on page two, it says additionally, "An R2 use seems to be a good fit from the standpoint of the Conference of Plan, serving as a transitional density between low-commercial designation and that of a residential designation." Further down in paragraph three, "Staff believe that due to the proximity to existing single-family residential development to the north and more intense commercial to the west and south, a rezoning of the property in application for a PUD overlay is the best way to impose certain restrictions on the site to ensure appropriate transition between single-family residences and more intense commercial." Then again, staff recommended approval. I walked through the minutes. You know, I guess I'd say we agree. We agree with the commissioner's statements. It's just unfortunate that the information they had before them in the staff report was wrong, but we absolutely want you to uphold the Conference of Plan. And if you uphold the Conference of Plan, this application fits squarely within that. And I understand that anytime you have protests, it is difficult for the city to deal with because these are your constituents, and they have very, you know, just and right, you know, concerns. But I want to focus on what the US, or excuse me, the State Supreme Court has said as it relates to protests. And this is a case called Pate v. City of Bethany, 1983 OK Civ Act 44. And this is a case in which Bethany denied a zoning application based upon the presence of protest. And the court at paragraph 10 says, "Evidently, the council confused the right to be heard with an assumed right of the party who shouts the loudest to prevail. Zoning fights particularly lend themselves to becoming gang fights, where often the one who procures the most signatures prevails. Given the fact that the city council is a legislative body and should be responsive to the will of the people, when it comes to such matters as zoning, the council has a duty to legislate for a purpose that transcends particular interests of individuals or groups and aims at promoting the general welfare of the public at large. To refuse zoning merely because a large number of people are against it is as condemnable as granting zoning merely because no one opposes it. In other words, the law is meant to protect the protestant's right to be heard, not pit the political might of the many against politically weak landowner." So what that tells us is, what you have at your disposal in rendering a decision in these are the objective criteria. Look at the basic physical facts that exist in the area. I would submit that if 144 duplex units to the west was appropriate, then 24 on a small lot here would likewise be appropriate. The next objective criteria that you have is your comprehensive plan. It's a brand-new comprehensive plan. And if you look at this area in the high intensity, we are well within it and well on the low side of what you would expect under your comprehensive plan for a high-intensity designation. And so with that, we would ask that you reverse the decision of the Planning Commission and consistent with your comprehensive plan, grant this appeal, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. I do have Kendall Dillon, who is a civil engineer for the project, if you want to hear any responsive questions to the drainage issue that was raised.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so before my time on the council, you referred to the approval of the 72 duplexes on the east, on the west. Was that a change in zoning before the 72 units were approved?
Yes. It was a, it was a brand-new PUD that was approved, the Yukon, I believe it's called Yukon Crossing.
And that was prior to the new 2040 plan?
Yes, sir.
Approved by the Planning Commission and the city council last year?
Yes, sir. It's immediately across the street to our west. And now, your comp plan actually intensified the area in terms of what could be expected, both commercially and residentially.
I think I would mention maybe, I appreciate your research on the, on the council making decisions based on protest. I don't think that would be a decision that the council's going to make based on protest, whether does it fit into the plan, and you're giving a pretty good argument that it could. But additionally, the city is essentially landlocked at this point. We have very little land to develop on the retail side. So the council does have to consider that issue as a very important issue, and I believe some of the spirit of the commissioners, I wouldn't speak for them, but my understanding is that we really need to preserve retail space and the opportunity to develop retail space. So we also have to consider that. I'm still on the line of, are we basing it on our decision on protest? Personally, I would not be basing on protest, but I would be basing it on the voice of the people in the area and the voice of the commissioners who have said how vital it is that we, that we preserve some retail space. So these are the things I'm weighing. I'm just, I try to be open and honest in our, in our meeting. So that's where I'm at, at the moment.
I appreciate that. May I respond briefly?
Sure.
So if you look at the site, you know, the So if you look at the site, you know, the problem with it being developed as retail or any other form of commercial is it's not a site that a traditional retailer is going to locate, because it's really not on a hard corner, right? It's well north of that main thoroughfare. You know, there's been talk of the status of the street being a two-lane road. I would submit that that is actually worse for commercial. The current zoning would actually create more of a traffic problem. But of course, you know, my client owns it and there just isn't the demand for the commercial development based upon the street typology and how far north it is located of what would be considered a traditional hard corner with traffic counts that would justify the expenditure to put on a retail business, which in large part is why the putt to the west of us was also likewise zoned for residential along this stretch.
You brought up the drainage issue, which was Mr. Korn's concern, and so address that, would you, please?
Yeah, I'm going to let the smart guy in the room, Kendall, address that.
Good evening. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll. In regards to the drainage, this is, which obviously zoning issue, completely different deal associated with preliminary plat in terms of drainage discussed and drainage ordinance, but certainly happy to address it with this. But it's pretty simple in terms of drainage. There's a little bit, about two acres of drainage that comes off of the Life Church parking lot. Here is a flume that will be intercepted at the back of these lots and discharged to the historic low here. There's a reasonable amount of drainage that does come across from the Walmart and Yukon Crossing in a pot, but you'll notice as we've drawn on a preliminary plat that we're intercepting that with a storm sewer that will convey it to the north. This is a detention pond that will capture that water, will detain it and release it at a historic rate, which is here. So all the water goes to the historic drainage and discharge point. It's captured, it's conveyed through a storm sewer, and then like I say, it's in essence metered out through a detention facility. The drainage obviously will be in complete compliance with your drainage ordinance. It'll be a full design with the final plat and reviewed by your drainage order, you know, for consistency and compliance with your ordinance. So there's a little quick synopsis. Happy to answer any other questions that you may have on that. You know, David touched on it briefly, but obviously traffic is an issue. But if you look at, quite honestly, fourteen duplexes, which is 24 units, that from a traffic capacity analysis in relation to Yukon Parkway, the intersection is virtually, I would never say it's negligible, because every car would have some impact. But if you look at it in terms of engineering analysis, it's pretty close to negligible. It produces a total average vehicle per day of 175, which sounds a lot, but it's not in relation when you compare it especially to C3 uses. So you take 175 compared to something to the tune of 4,500, that's the comparison depending on how, if it were to be commercial, that it develops out. And really, from an analysis standpoint, as opposed to looking at average daily traffic, what you really look at is the peak hour capacity. So that one hour in the day when everything is a problem. This produces like 14 trips during that hour, whereas the retail, again, depending on how you do it, produces closer to 200. So if, from a traffic standpoint, this is obviously a considerable down zone for all of those reasons. Respect the thought about, hey, we want to retain retail, but to me, you start to look at, okay, property rights and you can't dictate market in a sense of, if you just say we have got to reclaim retail, then you're telling somebody that that's the only use that you can use on the property. So the whole point of rezoning and comp plans is, is it compatible? Is it consistent with what's around it in the area so that this guy has a right to market it and to utilize it to the best of his ability in conformance with your comprehensive plan and what's adjacent to it, which is David has answered. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan and it's exactly, it's just less intense of what's immediately across the street. So that's the situation with the drainage, a little bit on the traffic. And any other questions for me?
You said 14. I thought it was 12.
It's, no, that's trips per, that's the...
No, no, you said 14 units, 28 people.
It's, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're not adding more houses out there.
Twelve lots, 24 units, but the peak traffic generated there in that hour is 14.
Yeah, I was making sure we still just have 12.
No, it's 12 lots, 24 units.
Do we have any more questions?
So I would like clarification on the fund that's set aside for potentially widening Yukon Parkway? Is that a city fund? Is that a group?
Maybe, do you want to address that?
A developer?
Okay, we have a fund that we require, well, there's two ways. A developer can install their improvements on a section-lined road, which is two lanes of concrete on their side, which makes it a four-lane road. We do it two ways. Either they can put their improvement in or put it into a fund. On Yukon Parkway, we chose to put it into a fund because of drainage issues that will have to be taken care of at a later date. Money has been the problem on that. Robbie's here, he can talk a little bit more about the design and what would be required, but basically it's going to need a bigger storm drain all the way from Wagner Road all the way up to this and past this site to pick up the drainage.
So what's the status of this account?
It's multiple accounts that are all put into a fund. I'm not sure what fund numbers, but each subdivision, there is a fund out there that has the money in it just for the improvements on Yukon Parkway where it abuts their property.
So did the developer put the money in there?
They're required to put it in, yes.
Lot front, do they continue to put money in there?
No, whatever the cost of that road is, that the city engineer, Robbie Williams, agrees with the design engineer, they come up with a cost and that cost goes into that fund.
So the longer we go, the more it's going to cost, so...
Unfortunately, that is the problem.
So we have no timeframe because we don't have enough money, right?
Well, that's the problem, the size of the storm drain required. And like I said, Robbie's here and he maybe will explain a little bit better.
So you can't go back to the developers?
No, no, not the way that we're doing it. If you'll notice Yukon Parkway, as you go farther north, you jump in and out. That's what happened. They put the improvements in and you're doing this all the way down and going to the north, and that's why it's that way. And with that, we decided to start putting the money into a fund at a future date to go towards that road improvement.
And you said it would cost about a million dollars to get the drain. That's just a ballpark.
Well, Robbie will probably, because at one time we had a rough estimate on that and a rough design.
Just to get that drain put in.
It's pretty expensive. How many years have we been putting money into this fund? Well, since, I'd say about 98, maybe.
What's our relationship with the state in regards to that intersection, Yukon Parkway and 66? If a turn lane was to be put in there to the north off of 66?
Well, we'd have to get with our design engineer and we'd have to work with ODOT on putting a turn lane in there. And if you're talking about on system, then we have to work with ODOT directly to discuss if they would allow, how they would allow it.
Would they potentially share costs or that project like that is thrown back to the city?
Probably right now it'd be on the city. It's a process to get on the ACOG projects and stuff, but it's on system. So Robbie maybe will explain that, because there's an eight-year plan and stuff that ODOT does, but I bet you might discuss it with them.
The, what Mitchell is talking about, if we were probably to add a right turn lane there, ODOT would require the city to pay 100% of it. There is ACOG, but since to compete with those projects and it's a state highway, you can't use ACOG funds for that roadway.
Can you give me an idea in 1998, how much it would have cost to do this project to make it four-lane compared to 20-plus years later?
Probably half of what it would be today. And what Mitchell was talking about is, you know, the road slopes all the way north to the river. So in the design, we actually have plans that are like, that we worked on years ago, but we're going to install a larger drain pipe down to Wagner Road to drain this roadway. And we did years ago submit it as an ACOG project and we didn't have enough points in order to move forward with the project, so it's been put on hold.
A question for the, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
David Box.
For Mr. Box. Just, so I'm totally cleared, the property has closed. Your organization owns the property.
Yeah, my client owns it.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
I would, if I may...
Oh, we'd better decide what we're voting on.
Yeah, I would make a motion to return this to the planning commission based on the assertion that the planning commission made an error. I have full faith in our planning commission and I don't want to vote to, I don't want to make a vote that would insinuate that I felt like they made a mistake. I would rather them make that decision, so I would...
But they've already voted.
Well, we can move to send it back to the planning commission, and that would be my motion.
Anybody else? Okay. You made a motion to send this...
There's two motions here.
Well, we considered a motion and now we have to decide which, what do we want to do? Deny, approve, or send it back to the planning commission? So we, we're going to vote to consider these and then we'll come back and do a motion to deny, to send it back to the planning commission.
No, no, no. What is the first motion?
The first motion is to consider a motion to deny, approve, or send the request back. And so I think we, in this motion, we decide, do we deny, approve, or send it back?
It has to be one of those three.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And so we've already approved the thing, so do we need to go back?
I thought the motion was to deny the appeal.
No, it was to deny the way it's written, consider a motion to deny, approve, or send the request.
But that, that's nonsense. It would have to be one of those three.
I know, but it's written here.
I would move to table the previous motion.
We can only do what's actually on the agenda, and so now we can do this table.
You can make a motion addressing the items on the agenda, and no option to be held like that, be to, or to, or denied. And so we not have a motion that we may have to do either. This one.
Right, and so that's what I'm saying, we have to decide which ones, so we don't have to go back to the original.
You have a motion on the table to remand it back to the planning commission.
Right.
Doug?
We need a second.
To deny, I mean, not to, send it back.
To remand it to the planning commission.
Right, so I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Let's vote, please.
Caccini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
So it will now go back to the planning commission where they will relook at that.
Thank you very much.
Four, consider entering into a real estate purchase contract with Karen Haye Graves Trust dated 10/4/2017 for the purchase of the property located in the south 35 feet of the north 100 feet of lots 15 and 16 of block 82, Lake addition to Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat, 6 South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma, in the amount of $179,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Tammy, do you want to tell us about this?
Yes, this office is right next, it's in the City Hall complex. It's right next to HR. The address is 6 South 5th. This will give us the corner, the complete corner lot there at 5th and Main Street. We will be able to move our IT department into that complex right there, into those offices that Ms. Graves has, and it will give us some space and enable us to move more people, I mean, put more people in there and move someone else around. So we're really excited about it because it really gives us a great opportunity and we don't feel like this opportunity will come around very often, so we appreciate her giving us the opportunity.
And Roger Reinhardt asked me to be here tonight. I don't know if he wanted to sign the contracts or what, so what do I need to do?
We have to vote on this first.
Okay.
I'd just like to case any questions about the property.
Oh, okay. So does anyone have any questions, Ms. Graves? Okay, thank you though for coming tonight. We thank you too for allowing us to purchase this if we decide. Thank you. Good, glad to hear that. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's vote, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
All right, item number five, consider approving ordinance 1421, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, adding section 110 dash six, designating wreckers to be used when impounding vehicles, creating a wrecker rotation system, and imposing requirements for providing wrecker services when requested by the City of Yukon. Repealing ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to change the discussion to this.
I have to have a motion first.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now, any discussion? Your name and address, please.
Cooper Hawn, 522 Colt Core Drive. Thank you, council. I'm here on behalf of two of my clients who are currently active members on the wrecker rotation that is currently going on. They gained access to this rotation through the statutory process. They met, they coordinated with Chief John Korn to gain access to that. Whenever they gained access, there was only one wrecker service actually actively on the rotation. Chief John Korn was very helpful throughout the process. He made sure that my clients met, you know, the demands that were going to be necessary to, you know, actively serve this community. He did that.
Are they in the City of Yukon?
They have Yukon addresses. They're located approximately a quarter mile outside the city limits of Yukon.
So they're in Oklahoma City?
They have a Yukon address.
But it's Oklahoma City?
I believe so. They actually are adjacent to the Yukon Public School Bus Barn.
Okay.
They are actually closer to the city than the Yukon Public School Bus Barn. They're extremely close to the high school. They're extremely close to very high-traffic areas within this city. They've got on the wrecker rotation. They've been serving this community now for a few months, I believe, and to my knowledge, it's been happening without issue. They received notice of this ordinance just last Thursday. Again, Chief John Korn was very friendly enough to reach out and say, hey, this ordinance may affect you based on your location. He hadn't had any issues with it, to my knowledge. And then I got to look at the ordinance and I do kind of see some issues where paragraph three specifically says, "Whereas the City of Yukon now has more than one wrecker service within or near the city limits, the city council desires to establish a system for rotating among wrecker services for responding to requests to impound, tow, or otherwise move vehicles." Then if you go down to subsection B of 110-dash-six, wrecker services, it would effectively remove those wrecker services that are located near city limits.
In Oklahoma City.
Located near Yukon city limits. That would reduce the amount of wrecker services back to one. So you have a paragraph speaking to the reliance and the intent of the ordinance and then essentially contradicting that same paragraph. I think that creates an issue. Again, I believe that my clients, you know, have, you know, fought their way basically to get on the rotation. They like to keep servicing this community. I don't think their location at all has hindered them. We've had no complaints. They've definitely been servicing this community now. I know on unfortunate circumstances, they've worked with the police to tow vehicles that need to be further investigated back to Yukon Police Department, you know, without pay. That's part of being on it. Unfortunate circumstances, if there's a fatality, they never charge. So they want to continue servicing this community. I believe they have a right to continue servicing this community.
And you have two wrecker services at one location?
I do. They have separate offices.
But is it at one location?
It is at one location. They're both at 11129 Northwest 10th Street in Yukon, Oklahoma, is the address.
Right.
And so with that and with the short notice, I do believe that there are additional things that need to be considered with this ordinance. I would just draw your attention to as well, it takes out wrecker services provided that require for tractor-trailers when it's a bigger wreck, give that discretion to the chief of police, which again, we've had a good working relationship with Chief John Korn, but those obviously require additional equipment, specialized equipment, more expensive equipment. But those obviously require additional equipment, specialized equipment, more expensive equipment. Both of my clients have equipment to handle those. So not only would you be reducing your wrecker towing services from three to one, where, you know, the ordinance says, because we have more, we want to do this, not because we want to reduce it. That's, that wasn't, I don't believe that was the intent and the goal. You'd also be losing access to, you know, two services that can provide heavier equipment to remove those big wrecks, those things that cause hour-long traffic jams as opposed to the things that cause people slowing down for fifteen minutes. So with that, I would just ask that this matter be deferred so that I can work essentially, hopefully with you guys. Your city attorney has been friendly enough to send me the ordinance the day I heard about it, but again, that was Thursday, April first, it's not a lot of time. I do believe there are other considerations that need to be looked at for this ordinance.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So these organizations that you represent, they're both in the same building, but two different offices.
Correct.
Are these two companies owned by the same person?
No, they're not.
Two separate entities?
Yes, with their own separate equipment. They each have, I mean, I can kind of give you a rundown.
I believe, I'm just asking, I just.
But I thought there was something about two services in the same address.
So are these two competing businesses in the same office?
Well, the way that they work essentially is they get on rotations, like they're on ODOT's rotation for the highway. You know, those rotations basically make it equal for everybody. So they're, are they competing? Yes and no, but it's a set rotation. I mean, my first client gets called, then next one, my other client gets a call, and the next one, neither of my clients get the call. That's, that's how it goes. And honestly, that's the way the statutes are written, especially from ODOT standpoint. There's a lot of case law that basically tries to protect that equality basically among service providers.
And I understand and I get that. But my feeling is, we support our Yukon city limit people first. I'd love for your client to move to our city.
My client recently purchased this location to service this city and have been. And like I said, I believe they have a property interest in their, interest in their position on the rotation as it stands. And I just believe that there should be considerations for those property interests and considerations when and before voting on an ordinance. Since again, I, you know, this was short-term notice. I really think if we could maybe work together, we could maybe establish some language that's more inclusive, that better serves the community, that which my clients seek to serve.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question for Chief Corn. Do you see a problem with not having several wrecker services? Do you see a problem with just, you know, going to one? With, you know, would it be, the workload be tremendous or?
Hard to outline since it falls to whoever that service provider would be.
Right.
And what they can bring to the table as resources. It would, so it's hard for me to answer that because I don't know which any one of these providers necessarily is willing to do or has done to meet our demand.
It does say in this ordinance that if we have a large crash in this particular Yukon wrecker, whoever it is, I don't even know who it is, couldn't handle it, then we could go outside into Oklahoma City and use a rotation. We would have those people on a rotation, we could call them in.
That actually even becomes at will, I believe, based on the statute, because of the situation or the circumstances as they dictate to the officers on a scene like that. If we would need to call specialized equipment or heavy equipment not available to us, we have those resources. We've had to do that in the past using Farrington Service out of Oklahoma City and Caverns out of El Reno. Both have the equipment for heavy operations.
So if we had a huge wreck, an accident, we could do call outside of our one person. And we used to have two in Yukon.
At one time, we had four, actually five different wrecker services, all within the city limits. Over time and attrition, that's been diminished. So, you know, this is, Mr. Reinhardt's done a great job writing this ordinance and this language, so.
I have a couple of questions. First, I want to be very careful about our conversation that we're not looking to approve or disprove any particular company, rather it's a matter of ordinance, and this, which also sort of looks like policy, I guess, or influences policy. But I want to be very clear on what we're looking at in the order. Are we, are we actually outlining that the police department will use only wrecker services in the city limits of Yukon unless they're not available at the moment? Or are we saying that the department will prefer wrecker services in the city limits? And what could change that preference? Are we setting up by ordinance a rotation that would involve one, currently one, business? And if a new business moves into Yukon, do they automatically hit the rotation because they moved into town? Or would it be a matter of a bid process? So is, I think most of that's outlined in the ordinance, but I want to make sure I'm very clear on it. So between you and Mr. Reinhardt, if you could, I knew I threw a lot out there.
And tell you, because it states clearly, my understanding is that it is just the city of, that you're in the city of Yukon.
Wrecker service located within the city would have to submit a request to be on that rotation. And so they have to meet the, have an office and storage facility within the limits of the city of Yukon, then they can submit a request.
It's not a bid process.
It is not.
It's just a matter of, you meet the requirements, you've put in the paperwork, and one of those requirements is within the city limit.
Correct. That's what this ordinance would allow for.
Is there, and this wouldn't be a question for you, Mr. Corn, is there any other business that the city conducts where we require that business or contractor to be inside our city limits? And if not, what's the difference? I'm sure there's difference, I know other municipalities have a similar ordinance, but what's the difference in the wrecker services and say, if we need a sidewalk built, and we get a, somebody doing that service, it's from another town?
That is sent out to bid, correct? Whereas this is not sent out to bid. We can do that.
I mean, is that the, is that the different, I mean?
One issue that public construction contracts comes under the bidding act is this is a service that does not come under that. And it also, you have to remember, this also has exceptions given the people involved, that what vehicle owner, the party designated the wrecker service provider to call. So if I'm in wreck, I have to bring, I'll count as Yukon, because my.
Right, right.
This is just the ones that the police are calling.
Then is there an additional rotation for outside the city limits, or would it just be, we put the call out and get a response?
There is no additional, there's only one rotation log.
So then how would you, if?
No, it says.
If you've.
Says that.
If you've exhausted the resources within the city limits at an accident, how do you know?
Then we have the, we have the capability and the right to call any service we would need.
So it would just be, let's find somebody that's available?
Correct.
The ordinance says, when there are insufficient number of wreckers and/or drivers available from wrecker service provider on the rotation list to address the needs. So isn't that the rotation list of outside people?
Well, it's not a separate rotation list. That just says, if we've utilized the rotation list and that can't meet the needs we have on the scene, we can then forego the list and start calling any resources that we need.
So having, whether we have one or two or three or four or five services in the city limits, this ordinance would not prevent or squash any competition from anybody willing to move to the city limit.
Right.
That is correct. It actually would, I think, support Madam Mayor's position of being a Yukon business and supporting the city of Yukon as a located business within the city limits.
Right.
Is this ordinance like any other ordinance in any other city? I mean, does El Reno, Mustang have the same thing?
Yes, the city of El Reno has one very similar to this, almost primitive, is they have more than one wrecker service within the city limits. I haven't seen it, but my understanding is that Mustang has one similar to this, although it does expand beyond the city limits to certain areas. Yukon's unique because you're contiguous to all the different cities. City of Oklahoma.
Right. Any other questions, discussion?
Yeah, I've got, I don't know if this is a brainstorm or a legitimate question. Would it be possible to have a, or feasible would be the question, of course, it's probably possible, to have a rotation, like a secondary rotation? So if whoever's available in Yukon is not available, we have a preferred list, basically that have gone through the same process. We submit the paperwork, we meet these requirements. So if all the businesses in Yukon are tied up, we want to be on your shortlist, so to speak.
I would have to check the state statute. I don't think the statute allows for delineates between geographical or limits or boundaries. It strictly just says a rotation log. And again, this is Department of Public Safety language we're talking about that governs towing and wrecking services. So I would have to go back and look at that and then talk to Mr. Reinhardt to find out if that could be done.
I would like us to consider that because I think we could build some.
Unless, and city attorney may know that already.
Well, I think we could maintain some loyalty and relationship with people if we were to, able to, if we were able to do something like that.
So the question is, if we're going to vote on approving ordinance fourteen twenty-one, which designates that a wrecker system has to be in the city of Yukon to be on the rotation list, we can go outside the city if we can't find one that's inside our city limits. That's what our motion has been for.
Chief, let me ask you real quick.
Yes, sir.
It says that if the one's not available in Yukon, that you have the availability to go outside. If this was passed, how would, what would be the procedure of you or your officers picking?
It would, it would be a resource list that we would maintain for several, any other type of resource, whether it be traffic cones, barricades, flashing signs, anything that we would need to control an incident at the time that isn't readily available to us from a vendor or a provider within the city. We can have a resource list that we would go to and get that service from whoever can provide it when we need it at the time. This may go to Councilman Gilliland's question. We wouldn't necessarily create another secondary log, but we would have a resource list of any available companies within what we would think is a responsible response area, fifteen minutes to get to us. So we could always go to that resource list and immediately call because we don't know that we're going to get a confirmed response from a provider just because they're on our resource list. So we have to, we always maintain those things.
So you could make like a resource list based on the number of miles away from.
You would of course go with the closest.
Sure, yes.
I think I have one last question. What, is there a timeframe that, where you would consider a business unavailable? Like is it an hour, two hours?
Almost all the service providers that we've ever worked with are very good, even previous companies, about informing us. And I say us, in that they are able to tell communication center at the time they call whether they can make the call or if they're available for the call. Then beyond that, we're looking to try to maintain a fifty, about a fifteen-minute response time. We don't like to have anything, be it derelict or involved in an accident, sitting on a roadway for more than fifteen minutes. If something arises with the provider and they can't meet that, all of them have been very good about notifying us, calling us back, and we could then call or ask for the next available resource.
Is there anything in whatever amount of time you want to look at, that the wrecker services within Yukon haven't met our needs as a city?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing no more questions, let's vote, please.
Shane Swarrenjen, live here in Yukon, Hawaii. I do own agency towing and some other small businesses here. The reason, I'll speak is not on behalf of the company, but on behalf of towing companies. And the reason why there's regulation and cities determine ordinances like this, okay? Not only do they, you know, they prefer in small communities to keep the business local, but what it does, it gives you regulation over this. And honestly, y'all have had a wrecker license in two thousand one. I moved our towing company here in two thousand nine. And it was just in two thousand nineteen, we realized there wasn't an ordinance for this. We are always under the impression that in Yukon, you had to be in the city limits. I mean, that's what we were told. And, you know, we joke about it now, but it leaves a huge liability loophole because we had, we started discussion with the previous city manager and then COVID kind of interrupted a lot of things. But the reason it's important is for regulation. And if, well, you know, Chief Corn is correct. Really, if you have a wrecker license in Oklahoma, it's at his discretion if you can get on the Yukon rotation. So you try telling a wrecker company, A, that's a mile away, sure, you're good. Then one that's three miles away, no. One that's ten miles away, well, what, we promised response times. Well, are you going to give them all a shot? You know, at one point, there was towing companies all the way on Sixty-third and Rockwell getting on because there wasn't an ordinance like this. I mean, and that's my main goal here, you know, to speak is that this, this, the state of Oklahoma DPS, they try. They're understaffed, you know, they really don't have a whole lot of oversight on it anymore. Their personnel has since, you know, retired. And they just don't have the regulation that I think a city like Yukon needs. You know, because right now, it's a dangerous game. You know, any company that wants on rotation will get an attorney. We just saw it. You know, and they will approach and say, well, if it's good enough for them, why is it not good enough for my client over here? You know, he's only seven miles away. Well, being in Yukon, having a facility here, we, you know, we buy into the city. So property taxes, revenue, everything that we purchase here to operate stays in Yukon. And I probably take that a little more personal because I grew up here and I like our local merchants as indeed as we do. We've gone as far as, you know, installing, you know, our own fuel capability. So we don't have to travel beyond Yukon to get it. We get it shipped to us, we pay the revenue on that, you know, the taxes on that. You know, we buy as much stuff here as we can, and you're not going to get that with companies in Oklahoma City. I've been there. You know, that's where I started. In Oklahoma City, it's about volume. And when you start bringing that theory here, you're going to have wreckers with scanners in them chasing wrecks. You're going to have, right now, the companies you're talking about, they share the facility for a reason. They're outside city limits, so they're looking for cheaper rent, okay? They can share personnel, so that lowers their overhead. So when you start attracting, you know, companies in Oklahoma City, hey, you know, let's go find, you know, the cheapest lot we can because the DPS really is a regulating, because in the DPS statutes, two wrecker companies cannot share one facility. We know this, but they don't have the manpower to enforce it right now. I mean, COVID was, you know, was hard on them, but I think regulation is what we're looking for here, and that's just what I wanted to bring up, is that I think it leaves a lot at stake if you allow Oklahoma City companies in. You know, we've been working, and Chief Corn's been working a long time with Caverns. When we didn't have heavy wreckers, Caverns always stepped up. There's good quality companies that have always stepped up, but Yukon-based facilities were always the first in primary choice. And I think it's because all the cities around us that you see that are following this guideline, they're following it for a reason. And, you know, we've dodged the bullet, you know, for all these years by not having the terminology. Now this is a chance to add it, you know. And that's pretty much all I wanted to talk about. I said, I just want to represent the, you know, the towing industry because, you know, this is what I've done. And seldom I get something that's in my wheelhouse, so, you know, here I am explaining it, and y'all have any questions?
Do you feel like you have enough records to maintain?
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, speaking on behalf of my company, we in exclusive did decide to leave. They contacted me and I acquired their records and personnel. And I kept in contact with Yukon Police Department to make sure, you know. I understand that's a big responsibility. We've been here a long time, and I take it serious. And so we added on more records. Right now, we have more towing, we have more conventional wreckers, we have flatbed wreckers, we have. we have the flatbed records, we have the heavy records, we have a complete system. We have, at this time, more records at our facility here in Yukon than all three companies that were here six years ago, five years ago. We added that because we need to accommodate and we take it serious. You know, our drivers are trained, our drivers live here, a lot of them grew up here, our personnel did. You can't say that about Oklahoma City companies. Where did, where do they live? And if Oklahoma City companies start coming here, you're going to see wreckers parked at gas stations and truck stops and Walmart and Sam's waiting on a wreck because they don't live here, they don't have an office here. So they're going to have some, somebody on call that night that's just waiting and hanging out. And that's, I think, what we're getting into trouble.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Let's vote, please.
Just to be clear, the motion on the floor is to approve the ordinance that has been under discussion.
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Right. Item five A, consider approving the emergency clause of coordinates number fourteen twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Right. Item number six, consider awarding the bid and entering into a contract with Shawnee Mission Tree Service Incorporated DBA SMC Utility Construction in the amount of five hundred forty-one thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars for the waterline relocation along State Highway Four project and acceptance of the bonds as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item number seven, consider awarding the bid and entering into a contract with Craft Reynolds Construction Company in the amount of one million two hundred sixty-three thousand one hundred six dollars for the sanitary sewer relocations along State Highway Four project and acceptance of the bonds as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So, any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item number eight, consider approving the two add alternatives for the Garth Brooks Trail in the amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents to include pedestrian improvement and replacing an existing five-foot sidewalk to match the constructed ten-foot sidewalks payable to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item number nine, consider accepting the fee in lieu of detention in the amount of five hundred dollars for the Tom Ricky Shop seven forty industrial boulevard as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
All right. Item number eleven, council discussion. We'll start.
Madam Mayor, we need item number ten, please.
Oh, sorry. Oh, new business. Sorry. I was like so excited. We have a training after this, folks. Come on. Any new business?
No new business tonight, Adam.
Oh, Doug. Thank you. Okay, council discussion. We'll start with you, Councilwoman Yanda.
Well, it's great to see everyone's face again.
Yes. Okay, Councilman Wooten?
That's what I was going to say.
Oh, okay. You can say it.
It's great to see some of y'all's faces. Rick, it's always good to, I can't even lie. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll move on to Councilman Kachini.
It'll be the last time I fly your plane. I want to thank the city and the volunteers for helping the veterans, okay? And we made this a Purple Heart Day.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate that because it means a lot to me because I've, I've served overseas quite often, twenty, thirty years overseas. So I want to thank everybody for that support and, and keep helping the veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gillen?
I'm going to say this very briefly, so something I haven't mentioned much in public before. So I have some special, a lot of special people in my life. One is my grandmother who raised me. She's been in a nursing facility. She's in, in, in pretty fair health, but in a nursing facility during the pandemic. She was able to come out and visit with her family over Easter, so it's great to see that transition. Also, in the last three years, we've, my family's had three babies in the NICU. So we were social distancing before it was cool. But I just want to just take one minute to ask you to be conscious of the people in your life that are vulnerable. Even though we're coming out of pandemic, people still have colds and flu and RSV. So when a new mama comes home with her baby, it's not your obligation to kiss that baby on the face and on the mouth and all that stuff. So I'm a little bit more outspoken about it these days, but I just want to bring a little attention, anybody that's listening, let's take care of our vulnerable people, especially our elderly and our little babies. Thank you.
You don't have to look at me every time.
I didn't say it this time. All right. Don't forget, Yukon Senior Games, April twelfth through the sixteenth. You're going to want to participate in that. Also, Saturday, May first, Festival of the Child from ten to four at Yukon City Park. Doesn't it feel good to be able to say these? Tuesdays and Saturdays, free fitness in the park. They'll have Zumba every Tuesday night at six thirty. Rick, you're going to want to go to that. And Pilates every Saturday morning. And then Saturday, May twenty-second, is National Bike Month, and that's at nine AM, ride from City Hall to Jackie Cooper Gym for snacks and door prizes. Parks and Rec is opening back up. Doesn't that feel good? I also want to say I had the privilege today to speak to the nursing leadership team at Integris Yukon, and it was such an honor to be able to speak to those people who are my heroes. Those people who every day went to work and faced life and death situations with the fear that they might contract COVID. Those people continued working in spite of all of us out here, and we're arguing about different things. So if you see a nurse this week, please hug them and tell them thank you. Well, don't hug them, we're still social distancing. Just tell them thank you, and make the most of your tomorrow, be kind to one another. This meeting is adjourned.
No ma'am, we still have item number twelve.
Oh, my gosh. Item number twelve.
How about we make a motion to take it too? We got to reconvene.
Yes, we will. Information item only. Receiving governing board training from the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, OMAC. We're going to take a two-minute break and come back
you can find a partner and do it with, with them. There was all kinds of inter locals agreement, O-MAG, that was maybe all of the best. We got started in nineteen seventy seven, June first in Hong Kong. The village decided they couldn't get any cooperation out of the Blue Cross of Shields. It's time to get a vote for their budgets. They got tired of the same inter local agreement. January, probably I could have any thought, and then here we go. So those two cities and towns, we now have five hundred cities and towns in O-MAG. So you could think about like a rural electric cooperative or rural water district. And so we're created by our members, we're owned by our members, and we're governed by our members. And so you all should have received the ballot, uh, for trustees. Hopefully we did, hopefully you'll pass the ballot this month. We're governed by a seven member board trustees. And, okay.
Needs to be on TV.
Oh, still on? Oh my, okay. So, uh, hopefully you all received the ballot and you'll be completing that as part of the deal. So even though you guys get your insurance from us, we're not an insurance company. Because we're not an insurance company, we do all kinds of training, scholarships, grants. Uh, thank you, I apologize for that. And, uh, we noticed that there wasn't a lot of training for elected officials. So we used David Weatherford's material and created a recognition program to do training for governing body officials. The only training that's required by the state is if you get voluntold that you're gonna be on the city council or you get elected, uh, you have to go to the municipal league's newly elected officials institute. And that's good training, but that's one time during your tenure, I think. And, um, here we go. You have to hold your mouth right. And so we bring this training to you all, it's got four steps to it. And the steps are, you have a governing body handbook, not an employee handbook. You take a stability test, we're gonna do that here in a minute. It'll be painless, that's why you have the world's best pen and your complimentary coffee cup in front of you. Fill that test out, don't need a name, just city of Yukon, elected or appointed. If you're filling it out, and then we'll, uh, go through the training. And when you complete all those processes, then we will write you a check for letting me come and speak to you tonight. It's not a credit on your bill, it's a check, which you can use for any lawful purpose. Such as, uh, give it a bonus to the clerk, so he could go on vacation. You could do anything with it you want. Why do we do this training? Well, we do this training because lots of times there's no training for what you good folks do. We think the best run cities and towns have fewer claims. And the claims they have cost less money for O-MAG. If they cost, cost less money for y'all, they cost less money for everybody. You all are a board of directors of a municipal corporation. You've never been told that before, you have, you've heard this. You've never been told that before, and you didn't know that when you went to sign up for the job. And you don't even know what I'm talking about. But you are a board of directors of a municipal corporation. As such, you have the same duties, jobs, resources, responsibilities a board of directors of any corporation has, like Walmart, for example. Now, we do this process because there's an old saying that says, what gets measured gets done. And what gets measured with feedback gets approved. Improved over time, and what gets measured and rewarded gets repeated. And so that's why we write you a check to let me come and talk to you. Because we'd like you to repeat this on a semi-regular basis. We're gonna go through these steps here, we just talked about this, I got it out of order. One of the things we do is play a video about insurance. It's not as boring as you think it'll be, and we'll see if it'll click. Can you tap the spacebar? This is always the exciting part, will the technology work or not? Alrighty then, technology's not our friend tonight on that. But, uh, we will cover that with, with you all in a written process in the future. Uh-oh, now we're froze up. Can you press the spacebar? So we'll take the stability test, and you have the answer sheet in front of you. I would ask you guys not to fill out the number until we go through the question. Part one, financial stability. Do you have enough money to operate? Now, here's the scoring system, it's zero through ten, you can write any number you want, zero through ten. We prefer you don't use decimals or fractions, zero through ten, whole numbers. Uh, ten would be yes. We have a written policies that requires at least twenty percent of the general fund to be in a reserve and fully funded. Now, if you don't have that, you can't get a seven, eight, nine, or a ten. You can't get a high score, because you don't have that. If you don't know if you don't have that, then you probably can't give yourself a high score. And it says, we have a written policy. That doesn't mean the city manager or the treasurer has a policy, that means you all have a policy. If you don't know that, you can't give yourself a high score. If you're a middling person, you say, well, we don't have a written policy, but we do have a savings account, and it's about ten percent, and we fund it. And if you're a low score, you say, we're broke. So somewhere between one and ten on that answer sheet in front of you, if you give yourself a score, that's question number one. Question number two, governing body stability. How stable is the governing body? A ten, a seven, eight, nine, something along those lines? Uh, we have great, well-informed, engaged elected officials. We've got good candidates, most have been well-qualified. Midland score would be more, majority are good, but some are not. And a low score is, we need a fresh crop. So somewhere between one and ten, give y'all self a score. And I should have told you this earlier, I neglected to do so. Hundreds of city councils and thousands of people have taken this test. So, uh, this isn't anything, uh, that we thought up for you all tonight. Number three.
Thank you.
You bet. Number three, it's like the passion play over in Youfall in Eureka Springs. I know how it's gonna come out, because we've done this a lot. How are your meetings? I got to be here on the night where you did zoning and tow trucking. I know that's always a long meeting, based on my previous experience. But your meetings are important, if they're a high score, they're professional, businesslike, joy to attend. You like being here, you might oughta get a better meal, according to one of your council people. If it's in the middle, it's kinda boring, not much gets done, but not much bad happens. And if it's a low score, it's a Springer show. So somewhere between a one and a ten, give yourself a score on your score sheet. And we'll be collecting these at the end of the test. Number four, we're in a council manager form of government. You all probably don't employ anybody directly, maybe you do, I don't know, maybe the judge or somebody. But anyway, you have a feel for how the employees overall are. So a high score is, our employees work hard, care about the city, enjoy their work. They're good ambassadors for you. A middling score is, maybe not as good as private sector, probably don't get paid as much, we get by. A low score is, um, we got a lot of turnover, we get a lot of work complaints. It's hard to attract and retain the talent we want to be executing the job here at the city of Yukon. Somewhere between a zero and a ten, give yourself a score for part number four. Question five, public image, what does the city residents think of your city? A high score is, we don't have a lot of public input at meetings. Public seems to trust us to make good decisions, not really many very disgruntled folks. Discussion's civil. Middle score is, public doesn't seem to care, doesn't pay much attention. A low score is, it's torches and pitchforks every time we get together, things are not great. Question number six, crisis management. A high score is, when we have a crisis, we come together, work hard, we're a team, and we're not afraid to debrief when it's over. A middling score is, stumbling through. A low score is, every day's crisis, it means it's Tuesday. Question number seven, I hope you're keeping up and marking those pages as we go. Economic development, high score is, we're working on that. We think we've got projects underway. We think we're gonna get some projects under our belt, hopeful about the future. And that'd be a high score if you're, if you're filling out your score sheet. Middle score would be, if something comes along, we'll try to help. A low score is, that's not what we do. We're not involved in that line of work. Question eight, planning and goal setting. How well do you guys do planning and goal setting? Question ten, or question eight, a high score, a seven, eight, nine, ten, something like that. Staff, elected folks, we've got well-defined goals we're working to accomplish. A middle score would be, we get around to it once in a while. A low score is, it's day to day. Somewhere between a one and a ten, write down a score for question eight. Question nine, administration. How good is upper management? And this isn't just about Tammy, it's about all the senior leadership, even though you only evaluate the manager in a formal sense. Management's been stable a long time, we work together, we set goals, we do good on our communication. We get good candidates when we have an opportunity to fill a spot. Middle score is, lots of changes, might get better, might not. Low score is, constant change, have a hard time retract, attracting and retaining talent. Number ten, the last question, communication, how well do we communicate? A high score is, everybody knows what, uh, what's going on, to the level that they need to. Middle score is, it's random, no continuity. And a low score is, it's a mushroom factory, nobody knows what's going on around here. Somewhere between a one and a ten, give yourself a score. I'll collect these. These don't have any bearing on your premium, you'll get a composite score back. And one of the things we talked about is, uh... The fact that we like to do things over time, and that way we can detract, detect, detract, detect. Well, one of those words, detect, maybe it's that one. Detect trends over time, but we're not really interested in snapshots. We're interested in trends over time, are you getting better, getting worse, or staying the same in these ten key areas of municipal operations? So how do you guys, uh, think you compare? Well, we'll get a composite to you, and we'll get this to you. But here's what we found around the state. Thousands of people have taken this test, hundreds of city councils have taken this test. What's the lowest score across the board, regardless of population, regardless of form of government? Public image. Which should be the easiest one to fix. But it's not. Because you've got all these keyboard warriors behind the, the screen that are constantly coming up with their suggestions and their criticisms and their ideas that don't really help make the world go better. And then you've got folks that think that there's unlimited printing presses, that we can do anything all the time. And across the board, public image is a thing that cities and towns struggle with. So that's part of y'all's job as elected folks. Because I haven't looked at your scores, but if, unless you guys are way out of the ordinary, you're gonna have a, a struggle with public image. What's the highest score? Across the board, regardless of pub, population or form of government. Crisis management, folks come together in a crisis. They put aside the stuff that doesn't really matter, and they work together as a team. I think that's, uh, very telling that those two things are that a way. Now, you see the low scores? And the low scores tell us that we feel like folks generally answer honestly on this test. Because I didn't take the test, they took the test, you took the test, I didn't take it. So if they weren't taking the test seriously, you know, everybody'd be like Lake Wobegon. All the girls would be strong, and the men would be above average. But here, you see, we have low scores of fourteen, forty-seven, twelve, fifty-one. Now, you gotta work pretty hard to get a twelve, there's only ten questions. Right? So we're not getting chamber of commerce answers, not everybody's got a ninety-five up there. And so we think there's honesty, and we think folks are taking the test seriously, and we appreciate that. We're doing something different this year, uh, I read a book. And, uh, we asked staff to get you a book, hopefully you took a crack at it. Simon Sinek got famous with Start With Why. His latest book is The Infinite Game. I think it has a lot of applications to municipal operations. And we've got a movie, what do you bet the movie don't play? What do you think? All right, let's see. Come on, here we go. One time. No, movie's not gonna play. You know, they say if Microsoft made airplanes, they'd only cost a hundred dollars, but they'd crash every thousand miles, so that's a trade-off there. Can you push the spacebar? Apparently we're snagged up. No. Still snagged up. I handed out in front of you all, uh, some suggestions about how to do better. And if you guys have those, and if you can look at those at the latest, uh... Sometime when it's not late at night. Simon wrote a book saying Start With Why. And, uh, has anybody seen Simon's Youtubes or read his book Start With Why, or know who he is? Okay, Rick, anybody else? No? Okay. Well, uh... We'll get to the next slide here, I bet. Can you manually do it? Okay. So Simon started a, uh, book called Start With Why, and he has the golden circle, which he took this target, and he wrote how, what, and why in there. And Simon says, almost everybody starts from the inside, from the outside, and goes to the inside. Right? So everybody knows what you do. And most folks know how you do it. But why do you do it? Right? Because why is the most fuzzyest part of the equation typically. And there's a movie that's not gonna play, press the, there we go. So, why do cities and towns exist? Well, all cities and towns exist for the exact same reason that the very first group of people ever clumped up. To be safe and to facilitate commerce. Not hard to figure out, is it? There's more safety in numbers, fight the bears, lions, the tigers off if you've got a lot of folks. And if you're along a road and you've got a lot of folks, you've got more people who have different talents, you can trade things and facilitate commerce. That's the exact same reason the city of Yukon exists, city of Tulsa exists, city of Hong Kong exists. Everybody has the same mission in this line of work. Increase public safety and facilitate commerce. That's the result of the why. But what is the why for Yukon? The why for Yukon is to create the type of community that attracts quality citizens who want to live, work, and raise a family here. That's the why. That's what your job is. That's your job. Create the type of community that attracts quality individuals who want to come here and live and work and raise a family. That's your why. Your how is everything that these folks do. Manage a budget, police, public works, code enforcement, solid waste, drinking water, fixing the roads, everything you do is the how. And the what goes to your mission, increase public safety and facilitate commerce. Your process as to why is your job as a board of directors. As a board of directors, you have the same three duties, resources, and jobs the board of directors at Walmart has. Your duties are the duty of care, obedience, and loyalty. The duty of care means that when it's time to have a meeting, you've read your agenda packet. You've asked your questions in private, you've gotten your information from your city manager or your city attorney. And you know the material, and you come here, and you're prepared to discuss and vote if a vote is required. If you haven't done that, you have not exercised the duty of care. I used to say, back in the Wayback Machine, when I used to work in municipal government, that I was really glad that the agenda books didn't sound like a beer being opened for the first time. Because all you would hear around the horseshoe is... If the first time you crack open an agenda book is when your rear hits the seat, you have not exercised the duty of care. You're not prepared for the meeting. The duty of obedience means you follow the resolutions and the ordinances that the previous city council has passed until you amend them or do away with them and make new ones. And we'll do whatever the state and the federally say we have to do. What is the duty of loyalty? The duty of loyalty says that your hat says city of Yukon on it. So it does not say Parks Department, Police Department, Public Works Department. It says city of Yukon. Now, a long, a long time ago, at Okeechobee State, they told me the definition of politics is who gets what when. That's the definition of politics. And the only time you good folks should practice politics in this form of government, because we're not an automatic form of government up in Chicago where you didn't vote for me, so your road's not getting fixed. Thank God we don't live in that deal. But in the council manager form of government, which the progressives gave birth to in the late eighteen eighties when they got sick and tired of Andrew Jackson's patronage situation through his presidency, and they brought civil service to the federal government. And then in the nineteen teens and twenties, we had professional city management come to municipal government. They said, we're gonna have things on merit. And so the only time you all should practice politics is at the budget. Because only you folks can allocate resources. I know staff prepares a budget and gives it to you for your consideration, but they don't allocate resources, you do. So you decide, because there's only finite resources, who gets what when. And other than that, you're out of it. Because you've already made your decision, you already played politics, you already decided who gets what when, when you allocated resources, when you adopt, when you approved the budget. So, you have the duty of care, obedience, and loyalty, and your hat says the city of Yukon on it. It might very well be that you have competing interests. And not everybody gets all, everything they want all at the same time. And maybe somebody gets a better street repair than your division does, because it carries more commercial traffic, and part of your duty is to facilitate commerce. And we're talking about the general fund mostly here, and not the public works authority. You have the resources, the time, money, and people. You good folks think your most scarce resource is money, it's not, it's time. You only meet fourteen, sixteen, some, something like that, times a year. The only time you guys are a board of directors for a municipal corporation is two things have to be in place. Number one, there has to be a properly posted agenda that conforms with the open meeting law. Number two, there has to be a quorum. If you don't have those things, you're not a board of directors. When she gavels, you adjourn, you're promoted back to citizen. And that's the way it works in this form of government. So there should never, ever, ever, ever be anything on your agenda that's administrative in nature. So what's your spending authority, Tammy? So there should never be anything on the agenda that's twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars or down. Because you already told her that she has the authority to act on those things. So, don't, don't ever have administrative things on your agenda. Your job is to set a strategic direction for this community. By twenty twenty-eight, the city of Yukon's gonna go here. It's gonna accomplish this. You adopt policies that help staff take you there, and you monitor results. You're a five-year-old in the backseat of a car, are we there yet, are we there yet? So you're deciding what you're going to measure, what you're gonna monitor. Those are your duties, your resources, and your jobs, and only you all can do those things. Everything's a process. When I was a kid, I thought everything was an event, it's not, it's a process. It's just like Paul told the Corinth Greeks in the book of, uh, Second Corinthians, that everything is a process. You plow, you plant, you water, you weed, you wait, the good Lord gives the increase. You all are in the process business. And in The Infinite Game, you have a long horizon, because hopefully the city of Yukon will be here five hundred years from now. You're only pulling the rope that direction while you're in office. The game will outlast you. You will not outlast the game. And so you're in the process business. You're, you know an event has happened, if the newspaper takes your picture and you cut a ribbon. Short of that, you're moving the organization towards that strategic direction. You're enabling staff through your policies and your allocation of resources to take you there, and you're monitoring results. Simon talks about advancing a just cause. A just cause is a finite, is a, is a, is a definite vision of a future state. It's the vision, he uses the words just cause. And he says, don't play an infinite game with a finite mindset. You guys are the chief vision officers for this organization, that's your job. Simon says, the true value of an organization is measured by the desire others have to contribute to that organization's ability to keep succeeding, not just during the time you are here, but beyond your tenure. You guys need to fulfill your role as the chief vision officer. Let's see, we've been through those. So, I hope you guys, uh, take the time to read the book and see how it applies to municipal operations. He talks about trusting teams and worthy rivals, existential flexibility, ethical fading. He talks about the just cause. He talks about the fact that a infinite game is one in which there's not really fixed rules and fixed players, and there's a lot of ambiguity and unknown things. And so your job, hopefully, as you take it and go forward with it, is to set the vision for the city. Your job in this form of government is not to be the city manager. And the city manager is not to be the mayor. Right? It would be inappropriate for the city manager to do what the mayor does. It would be inappropriate for a city council person to do what the city manager does. So if you, if you need information, you have a process that you go through. And that is the city manager. And you should push authority down as far as humanly possible. Right? Let me show you an example. I went through, and I read agendas for a solid year for the city of Sand Springs. Just like reading a council, not particularly exciting. I then categorized all those agenda items into categories that I thought made sense. And I had a smart guy that does how to work Excel, put them into a bar chart. So this is information for one full year for the city of Sand Springs. You see the yellow highlight there, contract under fifty thousand dollars? That's the only thing in a year that possibly the Sand Springs city council took up that was not authority that had already been granted. Because I think Elizabeth had authority to spend fifty thousand dollars or less. And every city gets to set that rate up to the state limit. And every city gets to set that rate up to the state limit. But see, they only do the things they can do. And what's the, how did they most spend their time? Their most precious and valuable and scarce resource, their time? How did they spend that? They received reports. By a long way. You see that top bar? By a long way. And then they made appointments, and they made budget amendments, and they did economic development and zoning. They received financial reports. They approved projects and cooperations. They issued debt. They made more appointments. They talked, they approved, uh, grants, or applied for grants, and inter-locals, and budget, and easement. You know, one of the things that scares when you get to the top of an organization, which you guys are at the top of the organization, is information. You wanna push authority down as far as you can. You wanna pull information up as high as it'll go. If you think of a triangle, down here at the base, there's a ton of information. Time you get to the point, there's less information. Goes through filters. Right? So you wanna turn that triangle upside down. You wanna push that authority down as far as it'll go. And you wanna pull that information up as high as it'll go. Because you need information in order to set a strategic direction for this organization. Now, I also went through and did it for the town of Manford, because everybody'd say, well, Sand Springs, big town, big staff, of course they can do it. Well, this is a town of three thousand folks, and you see how they spend their time. They receive reports. They appoint folks, they apply for grants, they do zoning, budget. The only thing you see on here at the bottom is employee. And I happen to know that in the town form of government, their employee was Mike Nunley before he passed away. So they evaluated Mike. They didn't get involved in personnel, they evaluated their employee. They spent their time in a town of three thousand the exact same way a town of twenty-five thousand spent their time. And we go around the state, I did this probably two years ago, three years ago. And we hold these folks up, because they're successful over a long period of time. So, you all are board of directors of municipal corporation. You have the duty of care, obedience, and loyalty. You have the resources of time, money, and people. You have the duties, you have the job of setting a direction, enabling staff to take you there, and monitoring results. You need to push authority down as far as you can. And the only things that should really be on your agenda are, number one, and I've been around the state, uh, and I've been to lots of city council meetings. And you know what you normally see on city council agendas? Yesterday and today. It's very rare to see anything about tomorrow on an agenda. It just is. But at least every other month, there should maybe be something on your agenda about tomorrow. There's an old example, probably gave it last time we were here, the City of Coeida. A little bitty town over stuck by Broken Arrow. The only way in and out of the town was underneath a railroad pass. It looked like a meth movie lab set kind of thing, like zombies would come out from it. It was horrible looking. And that was the way you got into town. And they said, this is hurting our community image, it's unsafe, uh, but it's a state highway, and it's a railroad. And the railroad's like dealing with your father-in-law, they're tough to get along with. And the state, ODOT, they don't care what you think. And there's nothing we can do about it. We're the little bitty town of Coeida, what can we do? So the mayor said, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna put it on the agenda, and we're gonna fix it. And because they were playing an infinite game, and they had a long horizon, guess how long it stayed on the agenda? Ten years. Ten years. It was on every meeting, every month, for ten years. And they have a brand-new railroad overpass and a brand-new state highway going through, underneath it. Now, did they get that because it stayed on for ten years instead of eleven or nine? It wouldn't have got, they wouldn't have got those things if it stayed on for eight, because they hadn't got there yet. They had two organizations they had no authority over, that they had to get to do something. They probably didn't care that much to do. But they said, we have a long horizon, we're not gonna quit till we win. So sometimes the staff would say, look, ODOT won't return our calls. Mayor, please call our state senator. Sometimes the railroad wouldn't return their calls, so they published a paper, a notice in the newspaper, or announcing to the railroad, we're fixing to condemn your overpass and tear it down. Because it's derelict. They didn't have the money to do it, but now the railroad, all of a sudden, starts answering the phone when they call. And ten years later, they have a brand-new entrance to their city. Because they didn't quit, because they played an infinite game, because they had a long horizon. Because they said, this is the most important thing for us to do. We're gonna put it on the agenda. They had something about the future on every agenda. Most of the time, ninety percent of the time, I'm being generous, it's higher than that. I go to city council meetings, there's stuff about yesterday and today, and there's nothing ever about something about tomorrow. Because you know why? That's hard work. Tomorrow's hard work. Because it's the why. It's the fuzzy thing. The how and the what, those are tactical. You can get your hands around how and what. That's the easy, less low fruit. Anybody can do that. Staff can do that, it's easy. The why? How are you gonna create a community that attracts quality folks who want to come live and work and raise a family in the City of Yukon? What are you gonna do for your amenities? How are you gonna cooperate with your schools? How are you gonna have lower crime, better water? Whatever it is, I don't know, I don't live here. What are you gonna do? Well, you guys are the ones that are in charge of the future in the City of Yukon. You need to figure it out. The way you figure it out is you talk to opinion leaders in the community, people you trust, staff. You see what the needs are, you see what the future should be, and you create that future. And you can't do it if it's not on your agenda. And you leave the administrative part to administration, and you set the future part, the hard work, to yourselves. And you won't get there the first time, or the second time, or the third time it's on the agenda. But if you don't quit, you'll do it. You know, one of those movies that was supposed to play is a Bank First commercial. I think it was the one with Yukon. You've seen the Bank First commercials? There's a prairie, there's, there's a prairie. And all of a sudden, there's a city, which is a bunch of tents. And now it's a town, and now it's a city, and now it's twenty-twenty-one, and I'm standing in front of you good people. It was a process, it didn't just happen. And it wasn't that long ago, a hundred and thirteen years ago? It wasn't that long ago. We're, we're a hundred and thirteen years into this process. What will a hundred and thirteen years from now look like depends on what you guys start doing today, here. You have a very important job. And you're the only ones that can do it. Everybody in town gets to have an opinion. Only you guys get to poke up your hands and vote, and allocate resources, and tell staff, go over here, do this, and to report back. I strongly suggest that you have a standing agenda item at least several times a year about the future. Thanks for hanging around late. And if you guys, uh, get through the handbook process, and if I can help in any way, we will. And we will, uh, send you a check for letting me talk to you tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.